Okay. All right, we're gonna start the work session, which is fairly informal, so we don't need to do roll call or anything like that. We have people here to present to us on the Gladstone Transportation System Plan update.
Hello.
Do you want to fill in some chairs up here? We've got three chairs here just sitting here waiting for somebody.
And quite honestly, if you want to pull a chair up around Matt and Darcy, you're welcome to do that. I just didn't have time to put up tables today, so it's meant to be informal.
And this is informal, so yeah, people come sit up here. This is much more comfortable.
So this is, it really is meant to be a work session. The presentation itself will go pretty quickly. I would like to get as much feedback from you guys as we can throughout this process. So I'll just, I know, I know the agenda itself says I'm gonna spend 30 minutes talking, but really I meant to just try to keep, to the extent that we could keep the discussion somewhat in a box there around that planning, the plan, the financially constrained plan. I want to save some time for Darcy and also save some time for just general discussion stuff, but I certainly don't plan to spend 30 minutes talking.
All right, so we have no takers?
All right.
People up here checking out the seats?
All right, okay. Well, then I'll just jump in. This is, I will give you guys a quick update on the, on the project as well. This is our first of two joint work sessions that we're gonna have with Planning Commission and City Council. The next one will be sometime in August, but we will need to figure out what date that is here real quick. But during that meeting, we'll be talking more about the draft TSP, whereas this meeting where our focus is more on, again, the plan and financially constrained transportation system plan. I'll tell you what that is here in a second. So our agenda really is just to give you a quick update, talk about the plan and financially constrained plan, talk a little bit about the policy and regulatory solutions that we've introduced you to before, and then talk quickly about next steps. Just in terms of project schedule, again, you know, we started this project back in August of 2016. We've gone through quite, quite the process, and we're now sometime in between the June and August, and just now starting to kick off the draft TSP. We're finalizing, we're, you know, just jump ahead here. We've gone through quite a number of meetings and met quite a few milestones. You can see that here we've got just a few more meetings to go, one more joint meeting with you guys, and then a couple, a couple of adoption hearings. In terms of our tech memos, we've, we've submitted nine tech memos at this point. The one that we're, the one that discusses the financially constrained plan is tech memo number nine. The one that talks about the regulatory solutions is tech memo number seven. So from here, we just really have a few things to go. It's a list of policies and ordinances, and then the draft and final TSP update. So with that, I'll just jump right into what we're talking about today, the plan and financially constrained transportation system. So as it says up here, the planned transportation system, this is where we take the, all of the issues, all of the gaps, all the deficiencies, all the needs, essentially all the issues that we've identified throughout this update process, and we identify a project specifically tied to that. In previous tech memos, we had listed a series of potential solutions to address those projects. In this memo, we have selected the preferred solution, and we've applied that to those projects. And so this planned project list is the full, is the, is the full project. So if you were able, if you had the hundred some odd million dollars it would take to spend to update all this, you could do everything all in one shot. Otherwise, what we have is a financially constrained transportation system, which takes essentially the, the projected funding that we have over the 25-year period, and identifies those projects that are in the highest priority for the city that could be funded during that, over that 25-year period. Those priorities are largely based on the goals, objectives, and evaluation criteria that we developed really early on in the process, and that have kind of gone through a variety of changes as, you know, till we get to where we are today. The next thing that this includes and that is tied to this is the planning level cost estimates. So we sort of cut off our high, medium, and low priority based on how much funding is available, and also based on, which, which is essentially a reflection of these cost estimates. I'd like to emphasize the planning level nature of these cost estimates. They typically don't include right-of-way, which can be, could be some of the greatest parts of the cost. And it can also include a lot of, a lot of things underground that we're not necessarily aware of as we go out and do these. So they're very planning level. And then there's the funding, of course. And this most recent funding, when we first started this project way back in August, sorry, August of 2016, we had essentially projected out about $60,000 for capital improvements over the 25-year period. So things were looking a little bleak early on. Now, we have figured out that there is, there is quite a bit more money that's available during that same time period. We also don't want to necessarily limit the projects that are identified in that financially constrained plan purely to projects that can be funded by the city, because there's a lot of other funding mechanisms that are available. And so we keep those in the mind when we're compiling these lists. So the, the plan and financially constrained plan, this slide looks a lot like the one that I presented to you guys last time in terms of solutions. And the, the plan includes projects that fall under each one of these categories. Again, transportation system management operations, or TSMO. This is sort of that, the highest, or the lowest hanging fruit, the least expensive type projects that are essentially tried to increase the efficiency of the transportation system. These involve a lot of your signal coordination, signal re-timing, some transit signal priority, freight signal priority, and some of this just general marketing and awareness of transportation options that are out there. Land use speaks specifically to the types of, types of changes you can make within your, within your comprehensive plan, your land use and development code, to, to try to reduce the amount of trips that are, people are taking by motor vehicles. So this establishes like neighborhood commercial centers within the residential areas, and it just sort of seeks to connect folks on a, on a more localized level. Access management is just, just like it sounds, essentially, these are the, trying to, trying to, trying to really clean up the number of access points along, along a lot of your facilities. Currently, the city's access spacing standards are pretty, pretty limited. They're identified about a 530-foot access spacing requirement for, for all city streets, all access points, all driveways and things. And there are very few that, there are very few streets that actually meet those, meet those requirements. The access spacing that we're recommending does bring it down to more of the, more of the localized levels, so we have access spacing requirements based on the functional classification system, which is consistent with the way a lot of other jurisdictions, including City of Oregon City, does it these days. We do have a good number of safety projects. That list grew exponentially after we met with the Traffic Safety Committee a couple of weeks ago. We have a large number of pedestrian and bicycle-related projects. This is largely just a reflection of the fact that there aren't a lot of operational issues within the city of Gladstone. We do have a number of transit projects. A lot of these are, a lot of these are tied to, tied to efforts that TRIMET has already committed to within, within the area. And then a good number of motor vehicle projects. And the motor vehicle projects are, just as are shown there, the street system connectivity projects, these are primarily the local street connections, the functional classification changes, and trying to essentially align the function of the road a little bit better with their classifications. We have a few freight mobility and reliability projects. These are primarily geared towards the streets along 99, 82nd, and other streets where there's signal systems. And then a few roadway capacity projects. So this is where you'll see your projects for like 99 and Arlington, and other, other intersections and other areas where there have been congestion issues historically. And so one of the first big tables that you'll see in tech memo nine is this, is this, essentially it's a summary table of the cost of all these projects. I think the original version of the tech memo had a slight, slight error in it, where it showed all of the funding over, under the, under the first, under the first five-year period, when essentially that funding is gonna become, gradually become available, more spread out over the 25-year period. So we have spread it out here in the, in the table below. You'll see that, based on this, there's about 2.8 million or 2.9 million dollars' worth of high priority projects, and within that same five-year period, we're, we're showing about a $750,000, $750,000 of funding being available to fund those. It's not a true representation of what's available during those five-year period, because you guys do have a backlog of funding that's been sitting there, urban renewal dollars and a few other funding sources that have been sort of waiting to, to be spent on something. And then in the medium-time period, you see that there's a pretty big number. We have about a $10.5 million, but that includes a $7.5 million pedestrian bridge, that trolley trail bridge that's a medium priority. I will just highlight real quick, we had our, we had our open house last week, and during the open house, a lot of folks expressed strong interest in having the trolley trail as, as being one of the highest priority projects. And while we, we fully agree, the cost of the project is the reason why it fell into more of the medium priority, we just didn't want it disrupting what we're identifying for the city's, the city's top priority. It doesn't necessarily mean it's not a high priority. We have since rethought this approach, and we've, we've thought about just identifying the trolley trail in that high priority project list, giving it a zero-dollar figure, and just saying that it's gonna be funded by somebody else.
Right.
So, and there's a few other projects that follow that same suit. So this table and, and the list, the way that they're identified now, are gonna shift around a little bit, and we have received, like I said, quite a bit of feedback already. But this is where we, where we are at the moment.
So the $750,000, that is the total for five years?
That's right.
Not per year?
Not per year, no, yeah, we're, you're actually, and then, and then over the, yeah.
All right.
It's, it comes out to, I think it's, my math is hopefully not wrong on this, it's about $125,000 a year. And, and that's, I'd like to say that's somewhat of a conservative estimate, because what we're doing is we're, we're making projections based on what has been historically brought in in terms of revenue and, and then sent out in terms of expenditures over the last 10-year period. They've also, the city, Carolyn Gray, has done a lot of work to making projections for the most recent budget estimate, and so this is reflective of that. And it does, one of the challenges there is that she's done her best to, to show zero balance essentially at the, at the end of the year. So all the money that comes in and all the money that goes out, and so we have to essentially try to eke out a little bit of money that we can set aside separately for these capital improvements.
So if that, if the transportation bill goes through and the gas tax is implemented, that's another $300,000?
Absolutely.
A year, so that just then would be added on the total funds available?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we were anticipating that early on for Clackamas County, and I believe that it did not go through originally.
Right.
And so this, if it comes back and does go through, then this will, these numbers will go up quite a bit. That's again why we like to have the, both a plan and financially constrained plan. That way, once you address your, your financially constrained project list, you also have a larger project list that you can be potentially pulling from. So as you're looking through and identifying the priorities and things in, in this memo and then in the draft TSP, it's just important to be sort of acknowledging where projects are falling, both for how the city wants to fund and prioritize projects, but also how the projects may be funded over the, over the long term. So again, alternative funding sources like, like city metro, but then also developer improvement. So there's a lot of projects, particularly in the pedestrian and bicycle project list, that will include new sidewalks, new bike lanes, which are essentially frontage improvements that developers would otherwise be on the hook for if they were gonna be improving their property. So, yes.
There's one acronym on here that I couldn't find. I'm either blind or whatever. TDM.
It's Transportation Demand Management, and I'll make sure that I catch where that one.
Say that again, you, you mumbled it in, wasn't it?
Oh, sorry, Transportation Demand Management.
Okay.
TDM.
I had the other one noted. I didn't see that one.
What else is TDM?
Transportation Demand Management is, it falls into the category of the transportation system management and operations type projects. These are, these, I think the way that we characterize it in the memo is they essentially address the demand side of transportation. So these are the types of programs that tend to shift folks away from driving single occupancy vehicles, so it's things that would incentivize or provide people with the means to do carpools or to walk or to bike or to take transit or use some sort of alternative travel mode as opposed to driving.
That was a great title, quite frankly, but I have no idea what it was.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Darcy here real quick to talk about regulatory solutions, and I just want to say that, again, we're, we're kinda going through this kind of quickly so that we can save as much time as we can at the end to just talk about what's in these documents.
So one of the, thank you, hi, Darcy Radzinski with Angela Planning Group, working with Kittleson on the TSP update. And our role really is to look at policy and the regulatory environment, to kind of ensure that your actions, your future actions, fit with what your planned system will ultimately be in your transportation system plan. One of the early things that we did was took a look at your development code, Title 17 of your municipal code, to see what you're requiring of development as, as that happens in the city, and how that fits with both regional objectives for both transportation and land use, as well as state objectives. So we, as you know, we have a pretty rigorous state planning program that has requirements associated with it, and then on top of that or below that is, is metro area. And metro has certain objectives related to land use and transportation that local jurisdictions need to pay attention to when they're doing long-range planning. So from that, we, we did an assessment of your, your code. What we have proposed is in a technical memorandum that went out for review in the spring, that basically looked at the requirements, some of the requirements, regional requirements and state requirements, took a look at your code specifically and said, yeah, you do a pretty good job with this particular requirement, this is how you fulfill it. Or if we felt it was a bit deficient, or we could perhaps improve it, we made that recommendation. And then, kind of in the final column of a table, we actually had legislative amendments, so underline, strikeout language for consideration. So how your ordinance might change to better comply with a regional requirement, or to better actually implement your TSP.
Which tech memo was that?
It's seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Regular first version, okay.
Right. And it, it's basically a very long table that, that spells that out. And so these are what, what your amendments to your local ordinance, your local regulatory code should do. First and foremost, it should be consistent with your updated TSP. So as Matt was talking about, you have, you're, you'll be looking at updating your access spacing standards. Well, when you have development come in the door, you want to make sure that whatever's being proposed is actually meeting those requirements, those standards, or moving in the direction of meeting them. So you're improving things along with future development, consistent with your planned transportation system. Consistent with other adopted plans and requirements or planning projects, obviously you've, you've got other things in the works, parks, downtown revitalization plan, your engineering standards, I believe, are being updated. And so all those things need to be consistent with each other, and so some of the recommendations point to that, you know, how to make your development code consistent with other plans. And then the regional transportation plan, the regional transportational functional plan, functional plan. So the RTP, that's Metro's areas, long-range plan for the transportation system, multimodal transportation system in the whole region. And associated with that, they have a functional plan that's really how to implement. If we want to do this as a region, what are the tools that we would like local jurisdictions to implement on the local level? So we're all kind of achieving this regional vision. And some of those things are, you know, connectivity, reducing the reliance on automobiles, trying to make an environment in the metro region that's conducive to transportation choices, so people don't always have to choose their, their car, they might be able to choose a bus ride or get on their bike, just to make some of those things easier to actually think about and maybe do. And then the transportation planning rule, again, that's the highest level of, of sort of planning framework that we deal with. And some of the changes we've recommended have to do with kind of beefing up your language for coordinating with ODOT, for coordinating with other agencies like TRIMET. So just, again, not, not even, I would, I would characterize the proposed amendments to your, your development code as bettering what you already have. You're not really deficient, but there are certain areas that could be, could be better, and we have examples of language that have been, that has been used successfully in other jurisdictions that we're proposing for, for Gladstone. I think one of the biggest sections actually has to do with transportation impact analysis requirements. So again, if you get a development in that will have an impact, perhaps to safety or access management, or just putting a lot of trips on your roadway, that you're able to require additional information, so you can make a really good decision about whether or not that's a good development, or if, you know, as proposed, it actually works with, again, your planned transportation system. So states all about that balance of land use and transportation, you know, don't, don't do something awesome on the land use side that's gonna be detrimental to your, your transportation system that you didn't plan for, you don't have money for fixing, that kind of thing.
So, so we can, we're gonna have that language in there. You're gonna propose, we have the language where 10-unit housing development could warrant a traffic study of some sort.
Right, and I'm not gonna commit to the thresholds, but that, but we are, yes, exactly. And most importantly is to have those thresholds, so there is certainty, you know, on the developer, developer side as well as the city side, like, hey, you shouldn't be surprised.
Right now, it's just kind of a...
Yeah, it's in our code, that these are our thresholds, that we're gonna ask for more information so we can make a good decision. And, you know, you, you probably are getting that anyway, you know, if you asked for it, you might get it.
No.
But if it's codified, then everybody knows that's what's gonna be expected, and it is an additional expense, you know, for a developer. So you want to make sure your thresholds aren't so low that just everybody's being kind of caught by that, well, I'm making an assumption, but we would, we would, we typically see that jurisdictions don't want to make everybody, you know, go through a, a more regulation than they need to. But really to set those thresholds, so like, no, these, yeah, that's a, that's a big enough development for Gladstone, that we'll want to see an, an impact analysis, to see how things actually are gonna work out.
Okay.
And what mitigation then we can require. That's also in additional language that states the city can condition approval by requiring transportation improvements.
So to clarify that, so currently, we are being told that for apartment complex, we cannot require a traffic system. That's what we're being told right now. So I think the thresholds right now are way too high.
Or there's none.
Or there's none, right, there's, there's no language, yeah.
I think right now we're relying on county.
So I have a question related to that, which is, when, this is gonna be discussed, when you're putting the language together, will we, have the group see this language soon to, so, you know, a lot of things get pushed back to the end, and then they say, we need to take action on it. Well, we need time to digest the stuff and work through it and make sure that it makes sense.
Sure.
And it shouldn't fall on burden, not just one group of people, I mean, you've got both commission and county. I think all of us need to know more detail about those kinds of things that have been habitually a problem to the planning commission and to the county.
Right.
So I'm saying that's a high priority, get that information out earlier rather than later.
And they spent on that, so the wireless communications tower, we spent, what, three, four months going back and forth with the legal authority.
Getting yelled at and threatened and...
But I mean, but we kept refining the language for three, four months.
Yeah.
Is taking some of our control back from the county, would that be something that maybe we should look at?
We can refine, we can be more restrictive than the county, and so that's what we're trying to do, is set our own more restrictive.
So clearly, the planners, when the planner's here, they work for us, that's our staff. So that county planner, so if there's something that we're not doing, I mean, that's our responsibility, is what I think, is what Clay does, that's our responsibility. So if there's a problem, we can work on that, whoever we need to.
Yeah, right now, the problem is that we defer most to the county. We don't have more restrictive codes and ordinances on Gladstone level.
So, Darcy, when will the proposed changes be available so the planning commission and city council can look at them?
The proposed changes were in tech memo seven, and so that's, that went out for review, and we actually got comments back from the technical advisory committee. And we finalized that memo back in May. Because the memo's finalized does not mean that the language suggested in the memo is finalized. So that...
So we can take that though, memo for the planning commission?
Yeah.
That's what they're asking for?
It's available, yeah.
If they can...
It's online right now, and it's been available for a while. Yeah, so I will say that it's a memo format, and it's also organized in a way where we've used the framework of the regional transportation plan, the regional transportation functional plan, so that, that document that says, okay, if this is our regional transportation plan, here's how we'd like local jurisdictions to implement it. And we've taken those requirements, and then said how the code complies, or where it could be improved, and then the underline strikeout language. So if you want to see how your code is being proposed to be modified, it's the underline strikeout language. What is confusing, and I find it confusing, is that it's not, those chapters are not sequential to your actual ordinance, your code, right? And also, we've made amendments to address certain requirements out of order of your code. So the next thing that's gonna happen, and what we're also charged to do, is to make findings, supportive findings, adoption findings for the draft TSP, as well as the implementing code amendments. And when we do that, we will restructure all that legislative, legislatively amended text sequentially to your ordinance. So all your, you know, requirements related to subdivision, connectivity, you know, through it, block length, all that, will, any changes we make, they'll be in one place, and you won't have to go fishing around. So that's gonna be more on the timeline of the draft TSP and that kind of package, here's your draft TSP, here's your draft findings, that your contract, county contract planner can take through as the staff report, and attached to the staff report will be, of course, the TSP, and also a section of just code amendments, underline strikeout, legislative amendment. So you'll have another opportunity as part of the hearing process, or pre, you know, your preview of the hearing process, to look at that language and to tweak it. And I, I'm not sure that we got comments from the county planner when the TSP went out for review. Highly recommend that, someone who really has experience implementing, you know, your regulatory bible. If you're gonna be changing that, that book, you want to make sure that that person is like, yeah, that makes sense, and I can work with that. It's clear and objective language, right?
Clay did not comment.
So that's, that's how that is. But yeah, you...
Should I also assume David hasn't seen these with him, or attorneys?
I think that would be...
I'm not sure at this point we need to pay to have our legal review done.
Yeah, he has nothing.
No, the attorneys are not involved with the TSP update process.
So let's flip to the next slide. The next slide just shows you some of the areas where suggested amendments are being made, or proposed, I should say. This is not a complete list. I noticed that we have some tweaks to your coordination of application and procedures, that kind of coordination function that I was talking about, so that's kind of in a different section. The transportation impact analysis section is 17.5, and I didn't list that, oh, no, I did, streets and roads, never mind. So there's a couple, couple sections missing. The memo is complete, but I think just for conversation purposes, to know kind of what's, what's happening where, it's sort of a high level. I think, let's see, what, what I want to say about this, for example, streets and roads, standards, you know, you really want your TSP to do the heavy lifting, so that when you amend or make tweaks to that, perhaps in the future, you're really only amending one document. Right now, you have standards, street standards, both in your transportation system plan as well as your code. Your code really just needs to reference, you know, one section. That's, that's a recommendation, for example. Extending streets, a lot of requirements are related to new development, and particularly subdivision development. You don't have a lot of opportunity for that anymore. But that's what a lot of that language is, is like, hey, you're doing a big subdivision, you want to make sure that if you have longer blocks because of topography, or because you're butting up against existing developments, and you can't push a street through, you want at least have bike-ped connection. You still want connectivity even if it can't be vehicular, so plan for all modes. So a lot of language like that, and again, you'll look, there seems to be a lot, but when you think about who it's applied to, it's not really gonna be infill development. A lot of it's not gonna be one single commercial development, it's just not gonna apply. A lot of it's just trying to get connectivity through larger developments, which, again, you don't have a lot of opportunities... you don't have a lot of opportunity for, but it'd be nice to have it in the code.
Can I ask a question? So, that section is going to cover, say, when a new development is going in, then connecting that to an existing street on the other end, right? So, an issue came up that I'd like to make sure he's addressed. So, right now, the notification area is based on the new development, and when our public works makes the suggestion that that road goes through, people on the newly connected area are reporting that they're not notified. And so, I would like to make sure that, I believe that section also talks about to whom gets notified and the range, that if we require that a road goes through, that the newly connected area, the notification expands to that area as well, because it's going to affect them as well.
I'll check that, and see what the requirement is. So, connections to transit, again, making more clarifying language, that connections need to be made against different modes, transit amenities, again, you know, you have planned transit lines where development happens along those lines, to require the developer to actually, again, make accommodations for connections to possibly amenities of a pad site, for example. So, some of that language is in there to enable the city to require that if development happens along a transit line like that. Again, onsite circulation, I already covered. I know that off-street parking standards are a sensitive issue for the community. Their recommendations for this, as part of this project, does not make any recommendations for changing your parking ratios, your parking requirements, does not reduce them. You are basically in compliance with Metro, you're doing what Metro has asked, so you don't need to worry about that. What we have suggested is, in some respects, tightening up your language about when you can require, when you can count certain areas of parking towards your requirement. Your language is a little loose, and we tightened some of that up. Again, you can take a look at that and see if that makes sense, and if that's appropriate. Sometimes jurisdictions like to leave things vague, because then you don't have to require things, but, you know, we're making some tightening suggestions on the off-street.
I have a question on that. So, in the case of off-street parking in front of, say, business routes, is it allowing any of those spots to be used for more than one business?
Yes, on-street parking can be used by other businesses. What we're suggesting in the code is to clarify that, you know, currently, you can count off-street parking spaces towards your requirement.
Sorry, number?
Yes, right. We are suggesting that you clarify it's along your frontage, right? So, you don't get to your neighbor's frontage as well. So, that's one of those tightening things. Another, one thing that's more flexible that we're suggesting is that you can count off-site parking spots towards your requirement if you have an agreement with a neighboring lot, for example. And that's something that's not clear in your code, and that would allow for more flexibility to get the parking you need, but it might not actually be on your parcel, as long as you have, you know, something in writing that says that could happen. The off-street loading in areas, well, such as Portland Avenue, where you really don't have a lot of room to get trucks, like, if you think Fred Meyer, you know, I know that's a big example, but where they have off-street loading, I mean, there's loading docks where you bring, well, where I live on Hawthorne, there's no room for that. So, they park the trucks in the street, they park it on Hawthorne, they unload a beer to 7-Eleven or whatever, you know, is happening, and then they move on. And the code, one of the code amendments is to allow for that to happen, so that if there's redevelopment on Portland Avenue, you aren't requiring that that business have an off-street loading area, which takes a lot of space, otherwise developable space, and that you would allow for unloading of stuff to happen in the roadway. That's a change. Again, that's really a metro area change, that jurisdictions in metro are trying to, again, maximize their downtown areas for development, rather than for parking and for loading. And then bicycle parking, you have good bicycle parking standards, but kind of pushing that, you know, that mode along, if you will. Metro's going to actually, long-term parking, so short-term, differentiating between short-term and long-term bicycle parking. And the rationale there is to really acknowledge that some folks may be parking long-term if they're commuting. It's not just for the tourists, or just for the folks, you know, visiting, or the kids getting out of school, but if you're commuting, you actually need a space that's secure, that's possibly lit, that's possibly dry, if you're really going to use that as a mode of transportation. So, the code requires some of those, again, for a certain threshold. So, not every redevelopment would have to have long-term bicycle parking, but it's a certain percentage, so I can't recall exactly. But, again, take a look at that, it's just, again, to try to get, you know, that mode of transportation to be a little bit more attractive. And I think that's pretty much all. My next slide is, do I have a next slide?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm done.
I don't know why I just did that. Go there.
Right. Right, and these are just, you know, again, some summation of what all these, you know, underlined strikeouts they're supposed to do. We want to make sure your code and your TSP are working together. Connectivity, important, expanding ways for, again, this is expanding ways for providing off-street parking. I would really qualify that to say it's really more clarifying what you already have, and we're not changing your requirements. Adding requirements for non-motorized modes, pet access and circulation, transit improvement, bike parking, right? And just making sure that whatever you do on the land use side is supported by your transportation system. And if it isn't, for example, if a transportation impact analysis comes in, and it's clear that they're not matched up, that you can actually require, it's like, okay, you want to do something, you've got to bring up the impacts to our system, you have to kind of fix those before we're going to approve your proposal, your development proposal. So, that's it in a nutshell. Did I take 10 minutes? Probably. I was far enough away, he couldn't take me under the table.
I'm sure we have questions. Who wants to go first?
You've talked about lots of things, but tell me, how are we going to tie in with Willamette Falls and with the project that's going to be happening there? Because you've never mentioned it, and I'm curious, because I feel like we're going to get shifted out if we don't look at that. Because there's opportunity there, and with the trolley trail that we've talked about. So, I think that that's something that we're missing the boat on.
The connection to...
The Willamette Falls project that's going to be happening, because it's going to tie in Westland, Oregon City, and Gladstone needs to be a part of that.
You know, historically, Gladstone, Oregon City, and Westland, they used to know as a tri-city area.
And it still is.
And, well, I don't hear anybody talk about it.
Well, in Westland, they do talk about it, and they do call it a tri-city area.
Well, I've got a picture of my grandma in 1910, walking across the college reason, and I, as a kid, used to go into the shopping center and walk across that bridge. And, you know, it's really important that we do tie the three cities together, and, you know, it's an historical thing, and things have changed a lot in the last 50 years, but I think we're starting to go back another way.
And is that an argument for elevating the trolley trail bridge to priority project? With the zero, I like the with the zero dollar value.
I think it needs to be among the high priorities.
And just to, yeah, and just to share with you, I mean, I've had a business in Westland, and I was very involved over there, and I have done that for the last eight years, except now that I'm here, more, I've lived in Gladstone for eight years, but my business was there. And that is something that we have talked about for the last three or four years, and Gladstone has always been a part of that. How do we tie Westland, Oregon City, and Gladstone in together with this project? And we've got Native American history here, too, and something that we could capitalize on. I mean, we've got great opportunity. Gladstone, as I always say, has been this quiet little community, and it has a lot of potential, and there's great opportunity for us, and the timing is right. But I'm afraid we're going to miss the boat if we don't look at our sister cities of how we can coordinate and work together.
Yeah, start thinking regionally. It's so strange, because we have been this isolated little burb for a long time.
With your code project, you know, it's like, I envision, once that's built, people that live there should be able to ride their bike on the trail and either come down Portland Avenue or all the way up to the second, that needs to be prioritized.
And bicycling is really becoming a major factor, and that is something we definitely need to look into more, how we can tie that in. We need to have bicycle access here, and in some of the programs and some of the things that I've seen that you have put together, I haven't seen much on the bicycling. You talk about it, but you don't tie it in. And it is, and that is the way of the future.
Amen to that.
Yeah, I agree. I'll try to address each one of these things individually. The first one, as far as the Willamette Falls project, beyond the trolley trail, which we've talked about, there is, one of the biggest challenges with the tri-cities areas, as you guys all know better than I do, is that we're essentially separated by the Willamette River and the Clackamas River, and so, just the opportunities to provide those direct connections to those areas is essentially limited to bridges. And then, in some very interesting ideas that have come out during open houses and things, are things like water taxis that connect Gladstone over to Westland. You know, it came up during some of our policy, some of our advisory committee meetings, some of our open houses.
Water Uber.
Water Uber, I absolutely love the idea, I would honestly quit my day job and start it myself if I had the nerve. But, so, I agree with you completely in terms of making those connections. However, again, it's limited. Some of the things that we're looking at for 99 is just making it more of a, if you can imagine, a friendlier environment for pedestrians. So, there's closing a lot of the gaps in the sidewalk network, installing street trees along the street, actually preparing the ODOT's in support of that, making some specific incremental improvements to the safety at some of the crossings, like 99 and Arlington, Glen Echo, and Glaukesser. And I'm just generally trying to make it a little bit more, like, a little friendlier through the area. Also, we have a trail that's been around for a while in the works that would go underneath 99 and connect over into Beltran Barre Park, and just other things that try to make it more bikable, more walkable, and a lot of them, just providing those connections. So, some of the projects that we've identified that connect, even the I-205 multi-use path that comes down and connects into the park system and the trail system, those are all ways of drawing people in and bringing people down from the trolley trail, getting them into Gladstone and all the way down into Oregon City. Those are all really excellent opportunities to provide those connections, and they're all in the plant, right along with, maybe the one thing there that hasn't really been, there aren't, admittedly, there aren't a lot of, there isn't a lot of emphasis on bicycle programming, so, things like, and what I mean by that is, we do have transportation demand management programs for things like car pools and whatnot, but there isn't anything like Bike Share, for example. Like, Bike Share is blowing up in the Portland area in general, through the, we call it Biky Town, and other programs that are like that, that could certainly be viable in a place like Gladstone over time. But as far as the amount of, as I mentioned before, there is a large number of pedestrian and bicycle-related projects in the TSP, and probably weighted definitely heavily in the bike and ped realm, and a lot of those trail, multi-use path, and essentially connections, I think will go a long way towards providing those connections.
So, one comment you had made earlier was that you wanted to reduce the dependency on the cars, and while I understand for, as Clay pointed you, that is the goal, I do want to remind you that at the beginning of the budget document, it did say that a very high percentage, remember the exact number, of our community do commute out of the area of the work. So, that is going to be something to keep in mind whenever you reduce the, if you reduce the access, which means we'll be able to get back to improvement.
But I'm also looking at the bicycling, too, because that brings, they're visitors, there's tourism that's coming into our community.
Yeah, no.
And, so, and we would draw more on the weekends here than we would through the week. And you're right about what you said about the cars and all of that, and yes, there is a large number of commuting. One other comment, and I've heard you say it numerous times, and help me to understand, or maybe I'm misunderstanding you, but you've talked about the businesses, and you've kind of thrown in there that some of the impact on funds and stuff that should come from the business owners. Well, we don't have major companies in this community, and to put a burden on the owners to help fund some of these projects is never going to happen. They can't afford that. And I wouldn't want to do that to them.
We don't have any projects that rely on funding from business owners unless they have, unless they're going to significantly redevelop their property, which is going to trigger frontage improvements. That would be the only time that the business owner would be on the hook for anything that's in the TSP.
Then I've misunderstood what you've said. Okay?
I have a comment on the bicycles. It's always used in conjunction with the term transportation. And I think the part of the north, you go toward the city, that's very true, I have some community that's part of the state on bikes for four years, among thousands of other people, every day using the Hawthorne Bridge. Here, it's much more of a recreational project, and it's hard to imagine, unless you work in the area and live in the area, that you're going to ride your bike to work. I'd view it more like in terms of a park or a golf course or something like that, where community recreation, as opposed to, we're all going, I'm just going to take a wild guess, nobody came there tonight on a bicycle.
Correct.
Most of them either walked, or drove their car.
Yeah?
Bike should equal recreation.
Yes. Well, that's the thing with the facilities, or planning for facilities, or amenities, if you will, like bike staples or covered bike parking spaces, those can be used by anybody, whether it's a recreational cyclist or a commuter. So, the regional idea really is to make things available so people can have choices. There are just so many areas that you wouldn't dare get on a bike, and if you did, once you got somewhere, you couldn't put it anywhere, right? So, to have things available, it starts making more sense. To never plan for it, you never will get people on their bikes. So, it's one of those kind of, you know, if you plan for it, people may come, will you make them come? No, you know, and you don't have to, it's not really...
But why waste the money to plan for something that's not reasonable? I mean, that's just like when we talked, when it came to the traffic safety committee meeting, which I really appreciate you doing, I can't remember if it was last month or the month before, that we talked about, you know, Metro's saying, you know, and the state wanting to get us out of our cars, but then you got TriMet who designs routes that if you want to go to Beaverton, you've got to go downtown and then out, which is ridiculous. And they're not going to change. So, why are they beating us over the head, saying, you know, make rules to get people out of their cars when they're, you know, making it difficult for people to get to work? Unless, of course, you work downtown. I mean, the summer, I'm teaching at Benson, and I happen to go 205 I-5, or 84, and it, you know, just was slow, and it went. But, and all these thousands of people, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, there's thousands and hundreds of thousands of people, maybe, or whatever, you know, that are headed downtown. And so, maybe a bus would get them there, or the light rail, as it zoomed past when I was on the Banfield.
Take Uber, water taxi.
Nah, yeah. So, well, you know, and it's kind of funny, I remember back in the 80s and 90s, you know, that every once in a while, that was talked about from, you know, and seriously, from Oregon City down to the waterfront.
Westland is actually going to be doing it.
So, and I can't remember, and I can't remember, I don't know, you can, if they even tried it, I can't remember if they've ever really gave it a try or not, but it has been seriously considered.
No, they're putting it together. They're actually doing it.
Well, that'd be, you know... Well, that'd be, you know, I hope the best for them, I mean, I hope it works. I think it'd be great.
We talked about it. Why put money towards something? A lot of the non-motorized modes or improvements or suggestions in your ordinance are relatively low cost. Bicycle parking scheme of development, pretty low cost, striping a bike lane, pretty low cost and the return over time, depending health benefits, reduction of congestion, you know, there's enough going on around active transportation. The benefits are so good that it's worth pushing, you know, out a little bit and trying to plan communities that have those things, you know? It's not just lifestyle choices, but it's really, I mean, they're looking at the health benefits, you know, we can't build any more roadways really, we can't accommodate any more cars, so what else can we do? And I'm talking regional, right? It's so, you know...
But it's still, I mean, I remember sitting right there, probably, I don't know, 10 years ago, when Lattice Motors came to town and we required them to put a bicycle rack out in front of their sales room. And we got, you know, and it was a big chuckle that went through the audience when that came up.
But it didn't cost them very much and maybe someday somebody will commute by bike.
Well, that's not true.
If you never plan for it, you're really lucky.
Well, I'm just curious as to how often it's been used.
Well, depending on what kind of a bicycle rack you do, they can, they can cost thousands of dollars. I've done, I've done a lot of research on this.
Of course, not that prescriptive. It's just like, please provide for it.
I'd like to get this wrapped up in the next couple of minutes because we have a regular city council meeting start at 6:30 and that would give people a break. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and all of these, we had a problem come up on the planning commission recently where public work suggested a connectivity between a new property and a side street which was not a primary side street, in fact, it's a dead end and there's an elevation change that's substantial. And the point came up that it really wasn't possible because the distance you could travel horizontally vertically, you can never get an ADA approved. So my question is, in all of this, have you taken into account, I have not read text on the memo yet.
I have neither.
But have you taken that into account in all of these different aspects? I mean, there are all of these curbs now that don't have the ADA ramps in them and I didn't hear anything about any of that and we have to deal with the ADA side of it.
Second, this could take me a lot longer than a couple of minutes to answer, but I want to...
I don't care.
I guess I'll give you one really high level, high level response to that and that is that what the TSP essentially tries to do is it tries to establish the framework by which you plan for and you implement throughout your transportation system. So we have cross-sectional standards in here, we have roadway standards, access management standards, all these standards that we're holding people to, to some degree and really it's, I don't want to say this, but I'll say it's more, more like, Darcy used the phrase, move in the direction of earlier, because a lot of times that's what we're trying to do is just move in the direction of meeting these standards. We're not necessarily going to hold, hold fast to every one of them. So what will ultimately happen is we'll identify a project in the TSP and whenever somebody comes in and develops like this apartment project you're talking about, the ideal is for them to build this system, to build this, whether it's a street, whether it's a pet connection, regardless of what it is, the ideal is for them to build it. That's what we're trying to move towards is having this connectivity. It then puts the onus on that developer to express the hardship, to say they can't do it for A, B, C, D, E, whether it's...
Photography, this thing about that, you know...
So we apply this, we have, start with the standard and then we put the onus on the developer to try to talk his way out of it.
So if that's the case, then I would just ask that the new rules that we make the ordinance or whatever, at least allow the planning commission after room to allow the, because we don't always have that option.
Okay. Tom had a comment or question?
All right, just a real quick one. I want to reiterate what Councilor Neese was talking about, the Legacy Park project. Gladstone does not advertise itself, in my opinion, okay? We've got a couple of great venues, the fishing for one, okay? The people come up here, we don't advertise it, though maybe some do. That project can have a huge impact on Gladstone or it can have a mediocre impact or no impact at all. We advertise and work to get the input to go our direction to some extent, I think will make a big difference and what Councilor Neese was talking about can be a huge impact on Gladstone. That's all.
All right.
All right, well, thanks you guys.
I think we're just about done. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
And we will see you again in August and we'll be talking with Jackie about a specific date in August.
Perfect. All right, we'll take a two-minute break. Okay, everybody, find a seat. Put my glasses on so I can see. Everybody down? Are you guys ready? All right, I called and ordered the Gladstone City Council meeting for June 27, 2017 at 6:34 PM. Hello, everyone, and happy Sunglasses Day. We actually need it today. It was either that or else Happy Birthday to You Day, so Sunglasses Day is good. Tonight, we have an evening full of updates, so be ready. First, we're going to consider the appointment of Jackie Betts as the acting city administrator and then secondly, we'll be getting updates on our current projects, civic buildings, the technology and software upgrade plan, downtown revitalization, IGA for the community education program, roles and responsibilities for boards, commissions and committees, adoption of new city council rules and procedures, amendments to the municipal code enforcement, business license program, establishment of a grant policy. We're not voting on any of those, we're just getting updates. Jackie, could you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilor Neese?
Present.
Councilor McMahon? Councilor Reisner?
Here.
Councilor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I would like to add to the regular agenda, item number 10, and I would like to talk about the process on our attorney and do we go out for RFPs or how is this handled? So I'd like to have further discussion on that.
Okay. Is it just professional services in general?
Yes.
Okay. Professional services. All right. Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to add an executive session to the end of tonight's meeting under 192 6602H.
Anything else? All right, do we have any business from the audience?
I do, I have three. The first is Sharon Alexander.
Remember, name and address or name and city.
Sharon Alexander, Gladstone. I would just like to see if I could get a copy of Eric's review. I participated in it and I'd like to find out the stand results with, is that possible?
You can, I mean, there's no review that's been produced.
Well, we all came and gave our, and so nothing became of that?
Nope. So you can do a public records request if you'd like.
And how do I go about doing that?
I believe information's on the website.
Okay. And then one other question about the restaurant that's going in down in Arlington?
Did we ever find out what that is?
Yeah, that's my question too. I have a feeling they're being sneaky about it because they don't want a traffic survey. That's my feeling because they're saying they're going to serve breakfast only. I just, so when you guys find out, you'll let us know?
Yeah, I have not heard.
Thank you.
I haven't heard, but yeah, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Bob Everett.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Dr. Bob?
Hope everyone's having a wonderful evening. I'm Bob Everett, 1-8235 Stonewood and I'm here tonight basically just sort of touting the festival. It's a little over a month before the event happens and it's going to be August 4th and 5th and right now, we've got, I don't know, a plethora of things sort of going on, I would, I'll use that term. Of course, right now, we have, we have, all our vendor spots are taken, which is amazing. We have over 70. We actually added a few more spots and were able to sort of put some people in some other areas and we'll analyze it a little bit more. We have a waiting list, so we'll see what happens with that. We have, I think there's, I want to say there's six or seven food vendors, so certainly a wider range than before. Scandinavian ones should be interesting, that's for sure. We've got the parade, we've got some horses coming in the parade which will be, and they clean up their own mess, so to speak, so we won't have to have anybody volunteering for that and so, I don't know, it's just, I understand that the councilors are going to have a team in the Gladiator race, so am I incorrect or correct in that?
Please?
Good luck.
And that's what a napping is called?
Yeah, we do have, we do have, you know, application forms for pie baking contests, the chili cook-off, a number of other things and so feel free to go to the website, gladstonecommunityfestival.org, sort of check out what's going on in there then too. And they do, and I'm sure Jeremy needs, does need teams for the Gladiator race, but I think that's about it. We can, we are going to be picking the grand marshal. We received eight applications, which was twice as many as last year and this time they were from different people. Last year we had four and three of them were for the same person. So, you know, it's, it's growing and we do appreciate everybody that does that. I appreciate the city and all their support, what they've done. We've got some great sponsors, Lattice Motors, the Clackamas Counties, the...
The Review.
The Review. Also, Mount Hood Tourism is giving us, has given us a grant, so North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce, that's what I meant to say, they've helped out on that too. So it's been, it's been, it's growing very much and we do appreciate it, so...
So is it the, just the 4th and 5th, so Friday and Saturday?
Fourth, 5th and 6th.
Oh, and 6th, okay.
And 6th, yep.
And then Jason, the chiropractor's the one doing the Gladiator?
Jeremy Schumacher.
Jeremy, okay, Jeremy. Because I think the fire and the police department...
They, I think they're, I, well, I know, I'm hopeful that the fire department has a team. There was some discussion the other day at the meeting about the, about the police department having one, but I didn't, we didn't get an enthusiastic response from that.
All right.
But I'll talk to Jeff.
Thank you.
Anyway, taking up enough time. Okay.
Newsletter and the Review.
All right, next, Mindy Garlandton.
Mindy Garlandton, 7000 Debbie Court. I forgot my paper at work and I'll send it to Jackie tomorrow. Basically, I'm just here because I want to get on the list of being in the know about Verb Incorporated. I think that they've done wrong by the city. This is the company that we've hired to work on our website. I've complained for, I don't know, six months, a year, that it's a joke. I've looked on their website, not one of those people really does what we were looking for them to do, so I'm not sure why they took the job on. I think that the city should absolutely, bar none, hold them 100% accountable for every last dime that we sent them a check for. I know it's a pittance thing, but I'm pissed about it. I am so hot that we even considered this company, that they even thought that they could do it, so the onus is not all on the city of Gladstone and it should not be and I think, quite frankly, we should go after them if for nothing else than just to warn them that they should not do this to other communities. The address of that place is about a $700,000 home in West Lynn and then the three principals, I don't even think any of them live in the state of Oregon. So, I know, I know, I just...
We're not laughing at you, we're not.
I'm so angry about it, I just can't hardly see straight and I've said something about it multiple times, just dropped, you know, dropped in passing and I should have written a letter because, but I really want to be kept on the know because I think that they should just, they've got to own it. Please, make them own it.
Mindy, there's going to be a report on it tonight, so you'll be able to get your answer.
Because I'm thinking we need to call Ray Rendellman. Have a lovely evening, Mindy.
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, then we have the consent agenda. And we don't have anything on the consent agenda. Correspondence?
Nothing late?
Just checking, no correspondence. All right, so then we're going to go on to the regular agenda and the first item is to consider the appointment of Jackie Betts as acting city administrator. We don't have any information on that one, or did we?
You should have got a draft agreement via email.
Oh, 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 yeah, I didn't make a copy of it.
I didn't either.
I did bring a copy of it.
I suspected that we would have one here.
Okay, I will get you a copy.
Okay.
The salient point is that former city administrator Eric Swanson resigned on January, or I'm sorry, June 9th. The city has asked Jackie Betts to step into the role as an interim city administrator. So to memorialize this agreement, we drafted a temporary employment contract with Jackie and that, you know, should have been sent to you via email last week. So the key provisions are the agreement is a three-month term, so the three months would allow some leadership stability for the city, give you some time to decide how you want to move forward with the permanent leadership in September of this year. The duties, Ms. Betts would have all the authority granted to the city manager by the municipal code and by the charter. That authority includes the authority to hire and fire employees, subject to the restrictions that are in the city charter, specifically for department heads. For separation, Ms. Betts may resign at any time with 30 days' notice. The council may also terminate the agreement at any time with 10 days' notice. If the termination is for cause, Ms. Betts would leave employment with the city. If the council terminates the position during the life of the agreement without cause, Ms. Betts would return to her position as assistant city administrator. We are not recommending a background check at this time because Ms. Betts had a background check when she started with the city just over a year ago. So as I said, you should have received it via email, I believe, on Friday. I do have a copy of the agreement here that I can make some copies of, so you can take it tonight. The city attorney's recommendation is that the council vote to give Mayor Stimple the authority to enter into the agreement with Ms. Betts and it is also backdated to when she assigned, or when she assumed the duties, which was June 19th.
Okay.
Yes.
Microphone.
Thank you. Question? So, Ms. Betts?
Yes.
Is this okay with you? There's a more fancy word of saying that. Sorry. Then I went dry, sorry.
And you better not say no.
You know...
Well, it didn't come out right, I apologize.
After Mindy's comments, I'm... No, I think it would be a wonderful opportunity and I appreciate that you would put me in that position, yes.
So, in the terms, because the only provision that I would like changed is from the three month to a six month, because I don't think three months is going to give us enough time with all the other things that we've got going. I mean, you know, this is just, you know, this isn't a whole list that we're going to be discussing tonight and...
Correct.
As, you know, Mindy brought up some others, you know...
Right. And Neil, I agree with you because, you know, I don't want to set her up for failure, so I want her to be, I want her to be successful and, and she's, you know, she's got a lot that she's got, going to have on her plate and six months will, you know, give us through till the end of the year and where she can get up to speed and, and do the things that's necessary and, and I, and if Jackie is willing to accept that six months and then come in as permanent, it'll give you time. it'll give you time.
But it's going to give you time to evaluate us as well.
Yeah, there you go.
Tom?
I was thinking we could leave the three months and change it if we need to. But I don't really have a problem with six months. The one thing I haven't heard, though, is that when we're doing this, if we, if we do this, I believe there's maybe some other items that need to be completed to in fact get her the support, to in fact do two or three jobs at the moment. I know there's some discussion about the recorder. But even then, it's still a pretty tall job. And one person's going to have a heck of a time pulling that off.
Yeah, I think she's thought about that, and I think that's something that can be looked at and reevaluated once you jump in and.
Sure. And I appreciate you calling attention to that. We have some, some great projects in the queue, and there's momentum, and I want to keep that going forward. So recognizing that I'm going to need to backfill for at least a six-month period, I appreciate that. And of course, I will keep you all appraised of what that process will be.
Okay, somebody like to make a motion?
One of the financial arrangements are also.
So what, what the proposed agreement is, is for a salary adjustment to $9,583 per month.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to make Ms. Jackie Betts an interim.
I think it's acting, that was the title.
No, it's interim. Can I propose a motion?
Yes.
I think a good motion would be to move to grant the authority to Mayor Stempel to enter into the proposed employment contract with Jackie Betts.
So moved.
Well, do we want to change that from the three months to the six months?
With the six month?
With the six-month adjustment.
Okay. Is that what you?
That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Councilor Mercer, seconded by Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Yee-haw. All right. The next thing on our agenda is a verbal report on, on projects by city administrator Betts. I don't have to say acting, do I?
You can say whatever you would like.
City administrator Betts.
I wouldn't say that.
I have a few slides that I'm going to show that you might be interested in pertaining to the website.
She's going to move. She's going to get right in the front seat.
We've got some extra chairs up here, too.
I'm going to sit here so I can face you. I have supplemental information that I'll be handing out. And I appreciate the, the time that you're allowing me to do this. I think it's important, given the, the current transition, that we do this in an open session so that the people that are here or watch this on the website are going to get the facts, and they're going to know where we are with the projects as I update you. So I'm going to take my time. If you have questions that I cannot answer, I'm going to be honest and tell you I don't know, but I would be happy to get the answers for you. So the first project, and in your council packet, you saw a number of exhibits. And the reason why I put them in there is because I didn't know if you knew about them or not. And they're also going to be talking points for, for information that I'm going to be providing you. So the first one is Exhibit A, which talks about a civic building's master plan. So basically, McKinsey Group entered into an agreement with the city that Mr. Swanson signed. And he asked them to do some design concepts in regards to the police department, city hall, and public works. And I'll talk to you a little bit about how Public Works got into this master plan. So basically, as far as I can tell, nothing was ever formalized in regards to, once the city purchases Portland Avenue, what are we going to put there? There's been a lot of talks about the police department going down there, but nothing has been formalized. So I wanted to call attention to the fact that if we're headed down the path to build the police department there, I think the city council needs to make a motion to that effect at a future meeting to do so. So in this master plan, the idea was that we would come back and, and show you the three options that we have. One is to just build a police department on the site. The second option is to build the city hall and police department on the site. And the third option is to look at a whole campus with the existing Public Works, Police Department, and City Hall. We're ready to present those draft proposals to you, but what I would like is direction from the council because I believe it's probably in our best interest to wait until we have seven on council instead of five. So I've tentatively scheduled that to be on the August 8th city council meeting. And part of that meeting would be to have the police chief, public works director, myself, our accounting manager. We would have the fire chief there. And we would also have the consultants from McKinsey Group come and do a presentation. And the presentation, I'm going to give you just a sneak peek here, but I wanted to show you some of the work that's been done. But when we come back to you on August 8th, it will actually have the financial impacts to those projects, and it will detail how we plan on paying for the police department and the city hall. So again, just so you can see, the first option that we're going to present to you.
Can I ask a favor? Dr. Bob, can you close the blinds behind you? I'm getting, yeah. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Oh, that makes a huge difference. Thank you, yeah. Appreciate it, just getting some glare. Thank you.
Basically, you've got Portland Avenue here. This is the existing Public Works site here. And one of the concepts is that we do just the one-story police department here. This is what the first proposal will be presented to you in August. The second one is if we keep Public Works the same again here, and if we bring a one-story city hall and a one-story police department so that we would have the court down on Portland Avenue, and that's where we would build the dual council chambers as well. So we'll present to you that option. And then the third one would be if we took the current Public Works site and completely reconfigured the entire piece of property to have a new Public Works here, a police department, and a city hall. I'm going to guess this is not going to be the option we recommend. But I think that it's important that we present it because as you're aware, right now, we have a temporary structure on the Public Works site where the offices are. And I believe we have that for another year and a half. So if we're not going to do a, a permanent structure on the current Public Works site, we need to be thinking about budgeting money to do some fixes where we are. And I think what Jim wants is the opportunity to let you know what those issues are. And that the city probably needs to start thinking long-term in the next five years with the Public Works. But that is one of the options. So basically, what I wanted to let you know is that the civic plans is draft form, it's ready to go. And if I have your concurrence, I believe that we are appointing two new council members at the July 25th council meeting. And then on August 8th, we would like to present to you the options and see if we can move forward so that I could get a request for qualifications issued in August so that we can begin selecting a contractor, an architect, for, we know for sure, the police department, and get everything formalized in a recommendation so we have direction to move forward on that project. And just as a side, in regards to the debris cleanup on that property, we have solicited bids. I'm working with one of those proposers to see if we can come to an agreement. And I believe we still have two outstanding business that we're still trying to negotiate, but that's very positive communications, and I'll just keep you updated on how those are going as well. So I feel very confident with the Portland Avenue site, and I think that the city is, is ready to start building the police department. So that is the first project update.
So at the time when we do look at the master plan, are we going to address the, the funding and contracting vehicle that is the best option?
Yes.
Okay.
We will do that as well.
One, one thing that you may or may not know, and I'm glad you brought up the thing about the police department not necessarily being agreed upon being down there. I think it's going down there or whatever, but it hasn't been agreed on at this point. The, the one thing that has been agreed on by the council is where the city hall is. At this point, doesn't mean it can't change by any means. But at this point, the city council has agreed that in this location, the city hall and library, so to speak, is going here. So if we want to change that, that's got to be considered.
That's correct. And that's why we want to make sure that we bring it to a full council so that we have that direction. And I think you'll hear in our presentation the thoughts behind moving city hall. It makes more financial sense when we combine the two projects. And also, it could allow us the opportunity to build a new library standalone on this site exclusively as well. And so, we're excited, and I think that you guys will be, too, when, when we see that. But I think everybody in this room recognizes that we need to start building one of our, our projects, and we need to do it soon. And along with that, that same night, we will also be considering council to do an exemption on the competitive bid process that would allow us to go out for a progressive design build. And we will explain the benefits of doing that at the August 8th meeting. That would allow us to have a, a project management oversight with that. And you can actually develop within a quicker timeline than if you did just a standard design build. So lots of good things, I think, will come out of this, this project.
So are we okay with civic buildings? Okay. Technology plan. Okay, so in your packet is a copy of the staff report that was presented, and this was back in March of 2016, that talked about the, the big projects that, that this money was going to fund was the fiber optic project, our accounting and software upgrades, and our website. And as most of you know, Gladstone is disconnected in the sense that we do not have connectivity even amongst our departments for Public Works, the library. And it makes a lot of sense for us to be all communicating. It's more efficient for the way that we do business. And just to have the, the fiber optics loop system is something that has been in the city council strategic plan. And so what we did is, the city council adopted this, this package. And what I want to touch on is, in your exhibit, it has the budget breakdown. And it shows you how much the city was going to be spending on each of these projects. And I'm ready to move forward on the construction of the fiber because as you will see in your packet, Exhibit C talks about a contract that we hired Comm Structure Consulting to do the engineering and design work for our fiber. So basically, the Clackamas County had just done a competitive bid process. And they had language in their contract provisions that allowed cities to do what's called piggyback onto their competitive bid process so we didn't have to do one ourselves. So Comm Structure gave us a bid and said for $16,828, we will design your fiber project for you. We had our city attorneys review the language in Clackamas County's process to make sure that we were following the rules, and we were. So we went ahead, and we met with Comm Structure. And they completed that work. And the last page of Exhibit C shows you how much that we paid for that. So now, the next step is for us to actually construct. So the first phase was to design, how much is it going to cost for us to go and do and put in the permitting and the fiber to do that? So if you move on to Exhibit D.
So did the, the $16,828 coming out of the $47,000, then?
Out of the fiber run.
Yes, it came out of the fiber run. And, and I'll show you, because I, what I want to be clear on is, in order for us to construct the fiber, the access control, the key card system at city hall is not going to happen because we need that $52,000 to go towards the fiber construction project. And so I wanted to be clear with you on what is not going to happen in this technology plan before we move forward. Quite honestly, I'm not sure what the thinking was behind investing $52,000 into a city hall that is going to be demolished. And so I'm not too concerned about not doing the key card system here at city hall. And that is also what our IT consultant's recommendation was, is if we were going to eliminate a part of the technology plan, that to remove the, the city hall key card access would be the recommendation, as well as the iPad Air computers for $4,000. So what Councilor Reisner was getting to is, if you look at what it's going to cost to construct the fiber, the bid came in at $76,000, which is well over what was projected at the $47,000.
Because the $47,000 was for the engineering and the construction.
That's correct.
Did we actually get a bid for that, or did we just pull in them or wag?
For, I don't know.
The fiber?
Yeah, I was.
That was before your time.
Yeah. And I don't want to use that as an excuse, but I really couldn't figure out how we got to the $47,000.
So that's way low.
Okay. So what, but what I wanted to reassure you is that Comm Structure, if you pay them for the, the engineering, and if you pay them to project manage the construction, if you add the, the $47,500 and the $52,250, we have funds to cover that project. And they are patiently waiting, they understand we're in transition. But I told them unless, I heard otherwise from council, I was ready to move forward with the construction of that project. And, and that's what I will do with that.
Because it's already been approved.
It's been approved.
Right, okay.
Yes, I just wanted to make you aware of what is not going to get done out of this plan because of that. And I, I'm completely comfortable with that.
What were the iPad computer, what was that for?
Us.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. He wanted everybody to have a. Okay. I can't even use my phone, let alone an iPad.
I've got one from work, and I don't know how to work it either.
A no-brainer.
Yeah, school gave me one, and I'm, Heather's, or not Heather, Braylon is still teaching me, my five-year-old granddaughter, on how to use it, so.
All right.
I'm working on it.
So we're almost complete with bringing the email in-house. We have the new servers, we're on budget with the accounting, finance, court, software upgrades with Tyler Technology. And I can tell you, Carolyn has done a phenomenal job of project managing that. And it has, it has been, we're very short-staffed. So to also learn this new system with, with our employees, it's been trying, and they've been very patient. On June 19th, we went live on the utility billing. And yesterday, we went live with court. And July 17th. July 17, we're looking at trying to go live with the business licenses. We might have to move that date around. And then in October, we go live with payroll and human resources. And combined with the fiber, we're going to be robust. So that's very good news to move forward. To the website.
All right.
Okay.
Here we go.
That's as pretty as it gets for me, right there with the website slides. So what I'm going to share with you is, there's a letter in your packet. And that is a letter that I drafted for Mr. Swanson's signature. We had the help of David Doofman in reviewing this. And basically, I chose this exhibit to put in your packet because it best describes the timeline of how we got to where we decided to cancel all contracts with Verve Communications. Now, again, this was before my time. But if I, if I'm understanding the timeline of events correctly, Verve Communications was hired to do some PR work for the city to help us get through the Benton trial. So they had come in to help do some PR work.
That's correct.
I believe there was no process in place on how we secured them in a contract. And I do have copies of the original contract here that I'm happy to give to you. And I can also give one to Mindy and save her a public records request as well. But this was entered into in April 25 of 2016. And attached to it is the website and communication plan exhibits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
And.
May I ask, when was the letter, Exhibit E? There's no date on it. When was that?
That, I believe, was sent to them, and that's a good question. I'd have to go back and look in my notes. But I believe that it was.
It's recently.
It's recently, yes. Because, the reason for the letter was because we kept getting a final invoice bill from Kelly Matthews. And at that time, the city had said, "We're not paying you. You did not complete the work of contract." We did have conversations with David on the best way to approach this because we too felt like we should be reimbursed our money for the work that was done. However, you also have to weigh, what is it going to cost for our attorney to fight that? And really, what it came down to is, do we just cut our losses and let them know that we're not going to be making the final payment, which we did not? Or are we going to pay thousands of dollars to go to court and fight this? And it was our decision to just let it be known publicly that we weren't happy with the work that was done. And that we did not feel like we were going to issue the final check in the amount of $1,400. And we did not pay them the final check for that. And I think also, what I put in your packet was a letter from our IT consultant that explains why we couldn't do anything with the files they gave us. So basically, when you hire a consultant to do website work, it's their work. It's their files. And for us to be able to deploy that work, we would have had to pay somebody to deploy it to see if it worked. So again, we were trying to stop the bleeding financially. And at that time, we decided that the best thing to do is to take a step back and do it the right way, which meant for me to solicit informal bids. So we had the letter that was going to Verve Communication, Kelly Matthews. Her address that I have is in Eugene. So I'm not sure what the West Lynn address is. But I do know that's where her business is, is out of, is the Eugene, Oregon area. I don't know what other connection, except that I do believe when she was doing work with Eric, there was a conversation about her having a sister that does website work and be happy to do the website for the city. And I believe that's how we got to using them for the website as well.
You're correct on that. So no bid, I mean, we didn't.
No.
They're just given.
It was, that's correct.
And she's correct in what she's stating.
Kelly Matthews.
So did we look at work that they did? Or you probably haven't.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
So when I came on, Mr. Swanson said, "Hey, I'd like you to assess this website project they're doing and tell me what you think." And I clearly did have some red flags from the beginning. And Eric was very supportive when I decided that we should just cut our ties with this company. I know that there was $25,000 budgeted for that. I don't like to waste public funds. And I know that I have a spreadsheet here to share with you as well that shows how much we paid Kelly Matthews for the various projects that she did. If you want to pass that out.
You just answered my next question.
So.
I'm not getting answers.
We had them do various projects. For the Benton trial, we paid her $6,525. For the website, we paid $9,166. We hired them to do social media Facebooking for us for $2,850. And then we just had some general communications. I'm not sure what those were, for $1,575. And then they helped us do information on the library project. They did a newsletter for us, and we paid them $1,462. So the total amount that Verve Northwest received from the city was $21,578. However, only 9,100 of that is to the website specific. And we did not pay their final invoice of $1,400. So for the website, $9,100 came out of the $25,000 budget that we had in the technology plan.
Okay. Less than I thought it was going to be.
So, well, question I have though, in that regard. On page two of the contract under payment, says the project wasn't to exceed $7,000 for website discovery and.
That's correct. So I was following the invoices when I started here. And I saw that we were bumping up against that. And so she had sent an amended contract that said, "No, that was just for the design work. And now you're going to have to pay for the construction build-out piece of it." So there was an amendment to that $7,000. So it was a total of $12,000, $7,000 plus $5,000. And then that's really when I just said, "Whoa, timeout here."
And so the supplemental was approved by who?
Eric and I.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that in mind, I followed the city's public contracting rules. And I did three informal bids. We received AHA Consulting, Civics Plus, and the Oregonian. And they were all pretty close. I've had experience with AHA Consulting. And they have done hundreds of municipalities in Oregon's website. And most recently, they did Oak Lodge. They did Milwaukee. And in your packet, I put a copy of their contract that we have with them. It is $12,000 plus the website hosting of, I believe, $2,700. So they're coming in under $15,000. And they are a true professional company. And I've been very impressed. So this is the exciting part of this conversation, is that I get to show you, first time today, I got a copy of what the front page is going to look like. And so the department heads, and I put a copy of the project team information in your packet. And it should be behind the contract from AHA Consulting. So the department heads went through an exercise with Dave Fels, who's with AHA Consulting. We have got the design approved. And the next step is that we are going to have a three-hour training with all of the department heads. And they have each assigned one person in their department that is going to be responsible for keeping updates to their own department so that Robert is not doing it citywide. And we will be going live in August. The training will happen on July 12 for three hours. And what I want to show you is a draft. And I know the color is not perfect. I took this from my computer. And what I've done is, the photograph that is in here, and I will say, it is very difficult to find appealing video, or pictures of Gladstone that we want to use on the website.
I think that was great.
And so I've reached out to community photographers. This woman's name is Rihanna Lankin. I don't know if anybody knows her, but she does drone art in the community.
Cool.
And I asked if I could show her photo tonight, and I would give her credit. And if the city decided to use her photo, we would need to pay her $100, which is a nominal fee to use it.
That's a perfect picture.
Take more pictures.
Yes.
She is actually willing to do that. So this photo and this photo are the two photos that we got today.
Looks like a real city.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
That comes next.
So the department heads are excited. We're excited because we see that there is light at the end of this project. And I think it's just going to, it's going to be fantastic with all of the information that we can push out into the community. And so I wanted to make sure that we ended this conversation with these slides. Because I want you to know that this project is going to get done. And we're going to have some nice photos. And we will do a similar type training overview for the City Council. Not so much so that you have admin rights to change, but just so you understand how to navigate through it. And once we do go live, we'd like to come back and do maybe a presentation for the public on that as well.
Sure. Awesome.
I think that's $100 while we're spent.
Wow.
So that's all I have for website, if that is.
I got one question to ask.
Okay.
Kelly did a bunch of things here for $21,578.50. We boohooed the website and aren't going to pay her for the whole invoice. So I'm assuming that all the rest of the projects are just wonderful and worth paying, or have paid for good things that have happened. When one, I mean, is it just a coincidence? This one went dead and the rest of them went wonderful?
I will say that as a communicator and a PR firm, that she did an excellent job for the city, yes. I just don't think that the website was probably something that we should have had a side contract on with her. That's correct.
Okay. So she did everything else, great.
I didn't have any issues. And I know Mr. Swanson didn't either. So I would say, yes, we were fine with that. So the last slide on the website is an example of the finance page where we'll be able to put, you know, all kinds of documents there. So anyway, just really excited about that. Okay.
Does anybody like that? Looks good? Yeah.
Throw in a calendar and.
I'll put.
Events.
Happy to put my calendar.
Oh, not, I'm talking about calendar of events.
Yes. Yes. And the nice thing will be is that if each department has a calendar, they'll all interlink. So there'll be a master calendar on the front page where it'll all go and upload. So. Yeah. Now, okay.
Jackie, regarding the fiber, was that to this building, the new one, or both?
It will be both. And it will also include the existing library because we still are looking at a couple of years before a new library. And so we want to have that connectivity. Okay.
All right.
So these items will not take as long. I did not really provide exhibits for you. But it would be good for me to talk about them briefly so you know when we have them targeted at a council meeting. First of all, the downtown revitalization plan. We received a Metro grant for $162,700. And this was back in 2015. My research shows that Ross Schultz was the interim at the time. And he signed, or entered into a contract with Jenny Lipscomb to project manage this grant. I can't find anything where we had done a process for the project management. What I do have is a copy of Ms. Lipscomb's arrangement to be paid $20,000 to project manage the downtown revitalization plan. And as far as what her duties are, it says that she will manage grant billing, timing and deliverables, manage consultant team, and review all products produced by the team.
$20,000.
That's what I have listed in her contract.
Jackie, could I interrupt for a minute? Would you go back? How much money, again, what was the number on the Metro grant?
And the city has a match of $17,000 of that there. So.
So $162 plus $17,000 was the total?
Yes. The mayor and I did meet with Ms. Lipscomb yesterday to get a transition update on this project. I was on vacation when we had the open house. I'm very aware that there are sensitive issues. And I believe that this plan has got a little off track. Our goal is, before it comes back to Planning Commission and City Council for approval as we get it back on track. And I really think what it comes down to is maybe listening a little bit more to what the citizens are having to say regarding the parking recommendations that are being made in the plan and dedicated bike lanes. And so what the mayor and I suggested with Jenny is if she could work with the consultants to regroup and discuss how we want to present that. And we may just take the parking recommendations out altogether and handle that as a side. So I wanted to reassure everyone that I am getting your comments and that they are being forwarded to the right people. And that we are working diligently to try and fix those issues before we put our planning commissioners, our elected officials, in a position of having to fix the issues. That's part of what our role is. And so I feel pretty confident that we can make that happen. We also have enough money in our grant, I believe, to get it through the adoption process. So we are not going over our budget of what was proposed with this.
And also, so everybody knows, three-story buildings are already allowed. That's not a change. Whether someone wants to build a three-story building, that's a whole nother story. Because our parking limits that. So, just so you know.
Question, if I may?
Yes.
So we've got a Parks Master Plan in the works. And also, as we heard earlier, another, you know, presentation about the Transportation System Plan. And they don't have a person handholding them going through this. Why does the revitalization plan have one?
Again, I can make the assumption that at the time this agreement was entered into that Mr. Schultz felt that he didn't have the staff to do that.
So, okay, then maybe I should have asked it a different way. Do we need a consultant to be working with Johnson?
Economics.
Economics.
Well, we're almost there with, done with the project. And quite frankly, I can't do it now. I need to backfill my position. I need to backfill my position and work on that. So if that's what you're asking, I don't have the time to finish it to completion.
And there's very little left to do.
There is very little left to do and we've paid her the bulk of it. My suggestion would be to have her work through these nuances and help us get it adopted. Hindsight, I think we could've done it differently, yes.
Thank you.
So the IGA with the school district on the community education program. A couple of months ago, Mr. Swanson and I met with administration at the school district. I think you guys were aware that there was never no formal agreement between the school district and the city in regards to the community education funds. We pay them $22,000 annually to do programs in the community. And so what we've been working on is getting a formal draft in place. And the school district has completed the draft. And one of the concerns in the draft was that the senior center was kind of subsidizing in addition to that program. So in the current arrangement with Gladstone Community School, the classes held each quarter incur no costs. So they're not paying rental fees. There's no financial support for the materials or staff. And Colin had calculated that it's roughly about $21,000 in in-kind services that the senior center is providing for this program. And that's in addition to the $22,000 that we are issuing a check to them in. So what we wanted to do is a compromise is to put language in the IGA that says that they will provide, that we will provide the use of the senior center facilities at a discounted rate of 25% of the adopted rental fees. And that the district will ensure fees charged for programs at city facilities and make sure that they're adequate to cover costs such as supervision, custodial services and rental of the facility. It has gone through the first draft with administration and they are not fighting that language. They think that that is a good compromise. I also have it with David who's doing a legal review for the city side. Once that's been complete, the IGA would be adopted by the school board first and then it will come back to council for approval. So I don't have a date scheduled for you yet, but I did want to let you know that we're working through that to get it in place.
So is that fair to the senior center? Because I know that they're trying to get more revenue and these classes are handled at key times.
Correct. And I asked Colin about that and he's actually very content with the reduced rental rate and feels that that's a fair compromise. As we progress through the years, that could incrementally change.
Okay.
But I do think that he is satisfied with that language if the school district approves it. He thinks that's a great negotiation.
All right. I'm with Tammy on that.
Okay. Roles and responsibilities of advisory boards, commissions and committees. So the subcommittee has met several times and now it's up to me to finish the legwork on this. Right now, I have it scheduled for the July 25th work session unless you would like us to hold off. It's another one of those, do you want to do it that night, right after you appoint two new counselors? Or do you want this to come back to you in the work session either in August or September?
How do you feel about it? It's your baby. I think September.
Yeah, because that's, if we do August, that's too soon and whoever, the new council people need to get up to speed. And I'd say September on that.
Okay.
Malachi.
If there was also something in the council rules you guys were talking about that had to be written with that as well?
Okay. So do both of them in September?
Well, that's kind of next on the list also.
So can we do both of those in September?
We can. And as you recall, the city council, April 25th, in a public session, they did go through the city council rules and procedures and we accepted the subcommittee's recommended changes. So we were really waiting until we did the roles and responsibilities before we formally adopted the city council rules. So if you want to do a work session first on the boards and commissions.
Yeah, and then.
And then bring them both back for approval.
To regular.
Okay. So what I will need help with and is making sure that we are inviting all of the members of the boards, commission and committees to the city council work session so that they can hear what those changes are.
Okay.
And so we'll make sure that we get that public participation as well.
Okay. And by doing it in September, that gives us time to put it in the newsletter on our new great website so people know.
Yes.
Our beautiful website with pictures, with the hundred dollar pictures.
Okay. Amendments to municipal code enforcement. The city council had a work session on March 28th. At that time, the city council wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence and public awareness about the proposed changes because of the parking in streets, the canopies that'll go away. So we did do some of that in our newsletters the last two months. It is now posted on the city's website. The information is available at the library and the senior center. And when I talked to Chief Jolly about this, we scheduled it for September 12th.
Okay.
So that will come back to council for approval on September 12th?
And if we have some concerns or changes that, because I'm still not happy with some of the provisions that we talked about.
So that's in September?
Right.
Okay. So let you know.
We'll just take it all then.
Okay.
Yeah. And if it's something that we can flush out before then, then Chief Jolly and I can meet with you and go through that.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, that would be good.
Thank you.
And just so you know, when we're all done, I'm gonna give you guys the latest agenda planning sheet with what's coming up in council.
Oh, good.
Except for the two that you just changed on me with the.
Sorry. Thank you.
Not that fast. A business license program. So this has been on the back burner for almost a year now.
Yes.
And I realize that there are a lot of questions and concerns regarding a fee that was imposed for rental properties a couple of years ago. And it really has just been one of those things that keeps getting pushed down. I would like to have a work session on August 22nd with the business license program. And I would like permission to work with Councilor Neese. I know she's done a lot of background on this as Tammy Bannock has as well. And we also need to consider, the city adopted a resolution this past year in regards to formalizing the allocation of revenue collected for business licenses and fees. And the desire for that was to use it on community promotions and business development. So in the 1718 budget, there's approximately $117,000 that we will collect in our business license fees. And the city needs to establish a process for how we're gonna allocate those funds. And I do have a draft sample of how we could go about that that I'd like to bring to you at the work session in August.
Great.
So I think that if we can fold in discussions about the business license and fees in general and talk about how we want to allocate the fees, I think that would be a very healthy discussion for us to have.
We'll make sure that, well, you all will make sure that business leaders are notified so they can be a part of the discussion.
I will go out and personally invite them.
I have one in particular that texts me constantly, so I'll give you that person's name.
And we also had a letter from Agary and Cindy Paxton in January this year that we told we would be addressing that this summer and I want to make sure that they know about this.
And there's another lady too that I want to get in touch with her and make her aware of it.
And I believe the final item that I wanted to bring to your attention is that the city needs to establish a grant policy. And not so much a grant that I was just talking about on how are we gonna allocate funds to people that want them, but how is the city going to apply for grants? We have no formalized way to consider or evaluate whether or not the city should apply for funding. We don't create line items in our budget. And I think the auditors and our accounting manager would welcome a formalized grant policy though. So if we're applying for funds, we have documentation that shows how much we're getting, what our match requirement is. And the goal with that really would be to try to minimize contingency transfers that you have to do at the end of year for project overrun. So I'd like to bring that to council on August 8th as a resolution for you to consider.
So that's gonna include, I'm assuming, like billing procedures? Because from what I understand, the Portland Avenue revitalization was just not billed.
That's correct. And for clarity, Carolyn had to do billing invoices twice to Metro because they changed staff that we were unaware of. And we are now waiting on a check for $94,500 from Metro for the downtown revitalization plan.
And Jenny was gonna double check on that when we're gonna get it.
Yes. So Carolyn has done a great job of keeping us in check with our finances, so.
Malachi.
Jackie, would it also be helpful if there was clear instructions on how planning would coordinate with whoever's in charge about it as well?
Okay, yes. I agree of that integrated in the policy. Okay.
So just to end my conversations, I'd like to end with the trolley trail because this today, it was not on my list of updates, but I did want everyone to be aware that there is a grant the city has for $225,000 to study the feasibility of replacing the trolley trail.
Bridge.
Sorry, the bridge. And what we've been waiting for is, and sometimes we get caught up in our own governmental red tape, is that we are entering into a three-way agreement with ODOT, Cockams County and the city to have this work done. And today I received a notice from ODOT project manager that DOJ, Department of Justice, has approved the contract. And so the next step would be for city council to look at it. So if I can get a staff report ready, I will bring this back to you at your next meeting to consider so that we can go ahead and move forward with having the study done.
Would that be August, would that be August 8th?
No, July.
Or July maybe?
July 11th.
I'm gonna try for July 11th, yes.
This was started in 2013.
If not, it will be August 8th for sure.
Okay.
Wow.
Other than that, I know I threw a lot at you, but I think there's a lot of great things happening with the city and we need to spread the positive news. And you have a wonderful department head team and good employees working here for the city that we just want to keep moving forward. So thank you for giving me the chance to talk about our projects.
Thank you.
Very well done, Jackie. Thank you for sharing with everyone.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Boy, we learned so much.
Yes.
Okay. So the next item on the regular agenda was the addition, item 10, to determine a process for the RFQ, RFP for professional services. So I don't know if it's something that we can't really decide on tonight, but it's something that we should probably start looking at.
Yes.
So who do we have do that?
Well, we'll talk, we can talk more with Jackie about it, but I just want to.
Want to have it out there.
Yeah, I want to put it on record.
Okay. Because I know we've got architects.
Right.
Engineering, engineering.
Contracts.
Contracts. We have attorneys.
Right.
We have, I don't know what other professional services. But I think that process has been kind of lax and listening to you tonight, it sounds more pressing than what I had thought.
So how about, I know that the city recently did a fresh look at our auditing firms. So how about if I get with Carolyn Gray and we propose a timeline for trying to get requests for proposals out on certain services that haven't been looked at for a number of years?
Yes.
And if legal and engineering, if those, if anything else comes to mind. Obviously for us, it's the time in putting the RFPs together, but we can give you an update on when we can go out for those.
Okay, all right.
Do we have a standard process? Because here we see a $21,000 contract was let with no competition. Do we have a threshold where it does require it to go out and have three bidders or, I mean, right now it doesn't sound like we have anything.
Well, we do have public contracting rules. They just need to be followed.
Okay.
And I have those and so Carolyn and I can go through that. But yes, for these types of professional services that we're looking at, we will need to do a request for proposals.
Okay. And I'd also like to request that Jackie, if you could give myself and Neil some time and we've got some things that we want to go through and look at on the budget and we'd like to make time with you to be able to do that on some expenses.
One thing, when we're looking at doing an RFQ or RFP, other jurisdictions give extra points if the company is located in Gladstone or within your city or if you employ people that live within your city. And I think that's really important to support the people that we have here as much as we can.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on the regular agenda? Business carried forward. Do we have any business carried forward?
Pretty much all Jackie's presentation was.
Yeah, business carried forward, yeah. Normally we have business from the audience second time around. I wasn't sure if anybody wanted to come up and say anything else. Nope. All right. Business from the council. Counselor Mistro.
And for me.
All right. Reisner.
Well, we had a robust traffic safety meeting last night and so there's some information that I'm gonna be working with staff to gather for them. And the parks board is taking on a project which I think is gonna be enlightening in that they have debbed up the different parks and you will be learning about them in future newsletters. They're gonna be writing little stories or tidbits about the different parks. So I'm looking forward to them.
Can I interject something? One of the things that we have been interested in, we would still like to do, is to give bits and pieces of whether it's Gladstone history or formation of parks during the course of Saturday or Sunday, Sunday would probably be the best day from the stage. Sort of informative types of things for the citizens and something to sort of give them some more information. History is my thing, so that's why I was interested in the historical aspect, certainly something about parks if someone's interested. Again, I'm, we consider ourselves coordinators, somebody else runs with it. We try to fit into whatever we're doing. If somebody's interested, you know, contact me and maybe.
Thank you. And everybody have a wonderful Independence Day coming up next week. You're gonna hit the thing.
Yes, I am.
So thank you for coming. Appreciate you being here.
Counselor Neese.
I just want to say thank you to Bill Primple. Bless his heart. Did I say your name wrong? Okay. And it was, we had our coffee with the counselor last night and he was the only one that was there. It was myself and Pat McMahon. And it was, and it was awesome and we really appreciate it. Thank you, Bill. And we had great conversations, so it was wonderful. And today I attended a tourism meeting and which it, and the reason I went is because it's an opportunity for Gladstone to be able, there's dollars. it's an opportunity for Gladstone to be able, there's dollars out there and that's why I brought up about the bicycling and some different things. We've got great opportunity to go after some funding. And I had to attend this class in order for us to be on the list to be able to go after it. So there's additional dollars out there besides the money that we got from North Clackamas Chamber for the community festival and helping rotary. So there's some opportunity and Meldrum Park is on my list. So that's kind of what's going to be happening there. And I'll talk more with Jackie and Mayor Stimple and we'll go over some things. So that's where I'm at.
All right, well, quickly, first I'll get rid of the dirty topic. I am part of the sewer group here, Tri-City. And I've been meeting on Fridays and Saturday mornings with the other mayors of this Tri-City district to try and come up with a solution once the whole Tri-City issue went more than just sideways. It went backwards and all around. So what we've decided to do is we're sending a letter to the county asking to sit down with them and put together a policy advisory group so that, so that the cities are actually part of the decision makers. Because right now, because of what's happened in the past, basically they disbanded the advisory groups and the county's making all the decisions. And we do not feel that that's fair for the cities and we're fighting right now to get some control back. So that's where we are. I'll keep everybody posted if you want to know. I know a lot about sewer now.
More than you wanted to know.
More than I want to know. And then Celebrate Gladstone had a meeting. Thank you to everybody that comes, it's really fun. We want to try and be a coordinating group for other events throughout the city so that we don't duplicate events and we try and make the ones that we do have bigger. So that's kind of the direction that we seem to be heading. Fourth of July is the Police Department and Fire Department BBQ at Max Patterson. It's from noon to three. The Celebrate Gladstone group is doing all the desserts and then some wonderful women are doing a ton of games, Michelle and Susan, for everybody, all ages, so it's going to be really fun. The Fire Department Police do hot dogs, chips, water, watermelon and everybody comes. It's really, it's really a good time. National Night Out is August 1st. They're still going to do individual events at different neighborhoods, so if you want to have one in your neighborhood, make sure you let the police department know so that they can get it on their schedule for the Fire Department Police to visit. I don't have one in my neighborhood, so I'm just going to have one here. Anybody wants to come down, bring something and we'll just have our own little potluck right here at City Hall. Halloween is coming up, we're just beginning to plan that or come up with ideas. If anybody has some great ideas, we're thinking trunk or treat, pumpkin carving contest. Please come with some ideas because we really want to make it big. Last year was amazing and I think this year if we close off Port of Portland Avenue and really advertise it, it could be great. And we're thinking themes, Fright Night, Pumpkin Parade, Spooks, I don't know, we need to come up with a theme. Holiday tree lighting last year was awesome and Nancy Turner, thank you, has contacted the Pooter Bows. Their memorial that's in front of Senior Center, they don't really want to maintain it anymore, so they're going to allow us to put a permanent holiday tree in there. So we're looking at moving that around and planting it sometime in the fall so that it's ready for the holidays. And we're going to try and go with maybe a grand for something that grows slow. We don't want to end up with a 150-foot holiday tree. I'm not going to decorate that one, somebody else can. And then our next meeting is July 19th, we're going to do it at 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM here at City Hall, so anybody that wants to come here, more than welcome. We have a lot of enthusiasm, it's a great group. And I want to leave saying thank you, everybody. Customer service is important and we need to not only believe it, we need to live it. And I think I'm hearing that we're heading that direction. So thank you very much and have a safe Fourth of July. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Motion made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Reisner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:50 PM.